Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll. Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
White.
Here.
Mayor Snyder.
Here.
I know Mr. Rouse is on his way in. So with that, we'll start with the Airport Department. Ms. Johns?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Hazel Johns, Airport Director, doing the budget, and also Tom Bullers, our Administrative Analyst, will also assist today. A brief outline of the items we'll cover during the presentation. Our mission statement, of course, is to be the best airport in the region, and I think we qualify for that, especially with safety and quality of service. Enterprise fund, obviously, and of note, we're regulated by the FAA and TSA, both for fire service as well as maintenance, repair, and security. And the airport's really a property management business. We have 51 buildings or 52 buildings, and we also have about 125 leases and/or agreements for the terminal, the airfield, and then aviation facilities with the fixed base operators. Tenants include airlines concessions, rental cars, and fixed base operators. We charge the airlines for landing fees based on the weight of the aircraft. We also charge them rent for the building, the airline terminal, and also the boarding bridge. The airlines requested that the boarding bridges be set aside as a separate cost center, so we do that. And the intent is, is that the fees that the airlines pay would cover the cost of our expenses for the terminal or for the balance of the airport's budget. But unfortunately, that doesn't always happen. The rental car companies and some of our other agreements, we have a minimum guarantee for rent, and then it's also either a percentage of gross or the minimum, whichever is greater. So our costs are, as I said, recovered from rents and fees, and when that doesn't happen, then we have the backup of our parking revenues and then also rental from commercial industrial properties. Currently, we have 55.5 full-time employees. The majority of those employees are in maintenance and security because maintenance takes care of the terminal, all of the facilities, the airfield, the runway, the taxiways, and also does landscaping for the airport. Security operations is like our dispatch center and also works on the airfield, keeping track of the fence lines and that sort of thing. We do have some proposed staffing changes in this year's budget. The airport has two managers in addition to the director, and one of those managers, the Operations Manager Tracy Lincoln, actually has 44 people under him. In this past year, we looked to improve our span of control and also to kind of set our structure very similar to the waterfront, and by doing that, we're recommending that the Maintenance Superintendent be changed to a Maintenance Manager. The additional cost is only $15,000 for the year. Additionally, the Admin Analyst is currently at Level 1, and we're suggesting Level 2, and that's $12,000 a year. ARF staffing, along with Fire Department, as you know, we'll get into that a little bit later, nine five, five fire positions are authorized, and in this budget, we're recommending six. This is the organizational chart with the addition of the Facilities Maintenance Manager. We've had issues at the airport for several years now, primarily with...
Francisco, go ahead.
Johns, could you go back to the org chart slide for a moment?
Uh-huh, I think so. Okay. Yes, sir.
So, what is, who's reporting to who right now?
Currently, the, my old position, the old Assistant Director's position is Business and Property, and then Operations Manager. So you had these two positions, were Management Level.
So all the people who are proposed to be reporting through Facilities Management are now reporting to Airport Operations?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So airline industry trends have impacted the majority of small and medium-sized airports in the country, and the airlines with their consolidations and mergers are really focused on profitability. They have been doing some fleet changes with the aircraft. And then to go along with that, then FAA changed the rules on the pilots and who could fly the regional aircraft, and they went from 250 hours being required before you could fly to 1,500, and it was done on day one. You just crossed this line, and the next day you had to do that. So it really impacted a lot of regional airlines and the contracts that they have with the major carriers. Our employment history over the last 20 years, you've seen this, we're down 26.2%. Similarly, air traffic operations, and an operation is a takeoff or a landing, so we're down 40% from the highest level that we had back in '97. So with that, you'll recall that American Eagle left in April of 2014, and we had the impact of $1 million to the budget. We resolved that by closing Lot 2 and the Shuttle operation. And then this January Frontier left, which is another $350,000. So to balance the budget, we're assuming that the aviation and terminal passenger levels will remain about the same as they are this year. We'll have continuity on the general aviation side, and then commercial industrial, we're hoping that stays up. Right now, we're really doing good with that. We're still below our target, but we're doing well. And then we've increased the airline rates and charges. This chart shows you the rates for this year, 2015, and we've increased them 5% for the building rent and similarly 5% for the boarding bridge, I mean, for the landing fees. The boarding bridge, as a cost center, increase used of the bridge will reduce the fee, and that's what's happening. This chart compares Santa Barbara Airport. You'll notice we're down here on the high end, and this is the cost per in-plane passengers. That's how the airlines check their costs. It's what they pay the airport divided by the number of in-plane passengers, and we're currently pretty high on the chart. These are all the airports that are certificated in California. Expenditures, we know that salary and benefits are up and also allocated costs because of the same reason. We have debt service. We have increased the amount that we've added to our equipment budget so that we could purchase a paint striper, which is used not just on the airfield for the runway and taxiways, but also for our streets at the airport. We won't have any holiday service, we don't anticipate any holiday service for Lot 2 this year since we didn't last year, and if everything stays the same, we wouldn't need that. We do have increased utility rates, especially water with Galita Water District, and then we had projected a decrease in our expenditures. And the ARF change would, in the budget, it's proposed to take place in January of 2016 for a half a year, and then for a full year savings in the second year of the budget, and that was based on the study that was conducted by City Gate. Briefly, FAA requirements have one firefighter required and one truck or apparatus, but we're recommending that instead of just doing one and one, that there be two instead of three. These were the findings from City Gate. General Fund pays for the third firefighter. That's not a good idea, and it's not feasible to have them be there just on certain hours. So the staff recommendation was to do the transition, actually keeping the positions in the budget, just not funding those positions. So our proposed budget for the new year totals $16,233 in our revenues. You'll notice commercial industrial is down primarily. That's because of the restaurant. We still don't have it up and don't anticipate having revenue from that until probably January Non-commercial aviation, that's the FBOs, the general aviation side of the field, primarily that comes from landing fees and fuel flowage fees. Commercial aviation, once again, is landing fees because they transitioned to heavier aircraft from the small jets. Terminal, that 277,000 is really primarily the rental car companies. It seems like they're doing a lot more rental than anticipated. Interest is down. And then the miscellaneous charge, we were maintaining, the airport staff was maintaining the quick turn facility for the rental car companies, but they've transitioned to, they developed a consortium and have their own contractor now managing that. So this would not be revenue coming to the airport. This chart shows that we have three major components: commercial aviation, terminal leases, and commercial industrial. On the expenditure side, salary and benefits, as you see, is up. Supplies and services, down. Part of that would be ARF because that's where we fund the inter-agreement with the Fire Department as well as the Public Works Department for the engineers. Allocated costs, special projects are down. That would be the shuttle for the parking lot, and then equipment, as we talked about. Our capital transfers for 2016 are $1,003,16, and as you can see, we have a deficit of $945,000. This chart just divides up the expenditures by program. Our reserves, as of last July, 2000, well, reserves as of July 1, 2014, we did have reserves above policy of $565,000. That's where the airport gets their revenue for capital. And our capital budget for this year, as you might know, we are entitled to receive federal grants every year based on the number of in-plane passengers at the terminal from FAA, and it generally, it provides $9 to every $1 that we have to match. And also FAA has changed their rules so that the airport or the city has to pre-fund the Change Order Authority for any construction contract. So first, we fund it. If we don't use it, we save the money, but if we do, then we need to have the money in the account so that it could be used. Our main project this year is the airfield electrical upgrade. That hasn't been done in 15 years or so or longer, so it's a complete upgrade. It's not just the lights, it's the cabling, it's the whole airfield. It's a major project. We do have some security fencing and also some ramp replacement. The commercial industrial development, that 375, that's to design and permit the light industrial buildings, wants direct relief, we, that sale goes through, and then we have, we'll be able to build our own, but we'd like to begin the design so that we can be on schedule when they start construction than we could, too. Street maintenance, we take care of all the streets at the airport that are not public streets, and our parking lots, both at the terminal and elsewhere. AOA pavement crack seal on the airfield side. We also, when we entered into some agreements with some of our tenants, for example, the first one, Mirror Pro, who's been at the airport for 30 years, and their rental to the airport on an annual basis is about $680,000. They requested some improvements to the buildings. We agreed, and next year is the balance of those improvements at $150,000. The next tenant, Teledyne, that's about $312,000 a year in rent, and we also need to change out the air conditioning, and that building was last remodeled in 1990. And then the building across the street, they occupy two buildings. We are still doing mitigation and monitoring for the runway safety projects, and this $50,000 is just to continue that mitigation. Part of our cash flow analysis includes future years, so some of the potential opportunities for increased revenue, this particular lease reverts to the airport in 2018, and if we assume the current vacancy rate, 34%, the airport would net $1.5 million in 2019. We also have, as you know, direct relief. We hope to close escrow with them in the spring or summer of 2016. We will lose the revenue from the land that we sell because it's ground leases, and we may, we also have an obligation to pay back some of the roadway construction cost, but it would allow us to do light industrial development. And we're thinking that the total that we could do initially would be between 25 and 30,000 square feet. It would be phased, and hopefully, we could occupy September, January 2016. So with that, we would generate about $600,000 in revenue from the building rental, but our proposal would be to split that 50/50 so that the operating fund gets half to replace what we've lost in the ground rent, but we establish a development fund so that we can continue to build out and ensure the revenue stream for the airport. At this point, I'm going to have Tom go through the cash flow analysis.
So, may I ask about the Taxiway H extension? It looked like a big-ticket item in the budget book. Is that in design right now, Ms. Johns?
No, actually, it is not in design. It's in our master plan.
Okay.
And the master plan is going through. We should be coming to council between now and December with the environmental document. Once that's done, then we can go forward with that, but that's in the lighter years of our capital program.
Okay, thanks.
Good afternoon. In terms of our long-term cash flow analysis, we conducted two different scenarios, one where there was an ARF adjustment and one there where there isn't, and this builds in the assumptions that Hazel just mentioned for direct relief development and the ampersand So we have a couple differences from the FY '17 proposed budget in this long-term analysis. The commercial industrial revenue, we originally had that budgeted $250,000 more on the assumption that we'd be able to move all of our land tenants from 6100 Hollister to another location. This takes that out because we don't know if we can do that. We're still examining whether we can do that. And the FY '17 proposed budget does not include the $944,000 in other. That is reimbursement from the sale to direct relief to reimburse the operating fund for any design expenses that were done upfront, funded by the operating fund upfront. And then in the bottom left-hand corner, when we went to Finance Committee, there was an additional $300,000 in capital because we thought we might need to replace the paging system at the terminal. We've been having a lot of issues there, but we are continuing to try and repair those without having to make such a significant expenditure. So on this slide, you can see the revenue enhancements. They start in FY, on the commercial industrial line, it's the second line down from the top. The yellow circles, that's the income from direct relief coming into the operating fund. The line below that, non-commercial aviation in FY '18, the ampersand lease ends May 9, so there's a little bit of money in FY '18, and then the balance of it comes online in FY '19. And again, the reimbursement for design costs fronted. When you look at the bottom line, the totals, we have some negative years in FY '16 and FY '18, but there's positive years after we fund all of our capital projects that make up for that. And when you look at our policy reserves, by 2021, we're able to recover and fully fund our policy reserves. So with no ARF adjustment, these scenarios are the same except for ARF cost. So the same differences for commercial industrial and other development at the top, but also this is different from the ARF budget that's proposed here. And then you see the revenue enhancements come in, and then on the bottom line, after the capital projects, there's negative numbers throughout. And the impact to the reserves is, our reserves fall below, below, below. By FY 2021, we're not able to make that up, and again, it's a similar problem for the General Fund. As the budget grows, the policy reserve grows, the requirement, but we continue to use reserves to fund some of those capital projects.
Help me out, though. There was another slide you had earlier about use of reserves in the slide, and it had policy over reserves, and it was like a $500,000 number. So that was as of 2014?
July 1, 2014.
Okay, so that policy over reserves, we've now expended?
It's still there.
It's still, so why then is this showing actual under reserve, under policy?
It starts in FY '16.
Right.
It's not this year. It's, this chart starts...
So that's what I mean, so the over policy was expended in 2015, moving into 2016?
It's in the '15 budget. Is that correct?
So if we moved back two years, you would have shown actual above policy? Is that what I'm...
Still...
Madam Mayor, Bob St. Mario. So '14, we had a positive surplus, but between '14 and what's projected by the end of fiscal year '16, they will have consumed reserves to the point where they're actually below policy reserves by the end of '16, as indicated by the first column, if you will.
So this is as of June 30 of '16, not July 1, '15?
Correct, end of each of these years. That's correct.
Okay.
So over a two-year period, they would have gotten to this place from being above policy.
Thanks, that explains it. Thank you. All right.
So in fiscal year '16, we're looking at overall, with all of the balance of the reserves that we have above policy, the anticipated savings in our current year's budget, we're still $300,000 short for fiscal year '16. In fiscal year '17 and going forward until 2021, there's a structural shortfall of around $600,000 that we need to make up. Now, should the airlines come and we have six to seven flights using regional jet aircraft, landing fees alone for those six flights would make up the $600,000. There's no guarantee, of course, that the airlines will do that. So the options for funding, as we had indicated, would be the fire positions being transitioned, and should that not happen, then the airport obviously would have to reevaluate its capital program, and in '17, we're saying not do any street maintenance. We would also look at our operation, and we would either eliminate or freeze four to five airport positions for around $300,000, and then look for, at all of our vacant land, which, we have that on the north, but we have a little bit south of Hollister, which is in the aviation facilities zone, and see if we could use some of that for storage yards. It would require going to Planning Commission because it's not allowed use under aviation facilities, but Planning Commission could make that determination that it would be okay on a short-term basis. So that's an option.
What about parking rates? Where are we in relation to other, like, similar airports in terms of rates, and is that another option for revenue?
We, every year, we do a survey with airports that are similar in size to the airport and also those that are in competition with the airport, and right now, our rates are at market. Not to say that next year, we could look at it again and make somewhat of an adjustment, but our, the number of users of parking is way down from what we've had before. So when we evaluated, I think, if we just raised it a dollar, it generated less than $200,000 or about...
$125,000.
$125,000. So not a big source for revenue. Okay, sorry, I was going the wrong direction. Just to also cover a few other funds that the airport has, as you know, we have the Passenger Facility Charge Fund, and that's a user fee of $4.50 collected on airline tickets, and that revenue also goes, it's in an application to pay part of the debt service on the terminal, about $1.3 million a year, and it goes, the current one would go out to $20,039. Congress is considering, or at least being asked to consider, increasing that passenger facility charge from $4.50 to $8 or $8.50, and then tying it to a CPI index. If that were to happen, then we could supply or apply for another application to use the difference between the $4.50 and the $8, and that funds, those funds could be used for capital improvements on the airfield. It's the same requirements as the AIP grants that we get, but it is a possibility if Congress changes the legislation, we will certainly apply for that grant. Customer Facility Charge Fund, this is the one for the QTA or the Quick Turn Facility for the rental car companies. The city is the investor on that, and we pay debt service annually, but we've acquired a surplus, and we are recommending that we pay down the debt to the city of $3.50. These funds can't be used for anything other than that under state law. And then we have the Tea Hangar Fund, which is a loan from the state that we received several years back to construct the 24 tea hangers that we lease out, and the, our operating fund subsidizes that program just because of the cost of those tea hangers. We actually constructed at the height of the, before the recession, so we paid quite a bit for that, and we just need to subsidize for a number of years until they can, the rent covers the debt. Just briefly, a few performance objectives. We want to prepare legal documents for the sale of direct relief or to direct relief. We want to reevaluate our utility rates and charges for our tenants because we do charge water and sewer rates, and that needs to be updated. And then we want to continue to promote the airport through a marketing program. And facility maintenance is hoping to complete repairs to the restaurant. Actually, before January, they've kind of targeted August, so if all goes well, that would be done. And then we need a training program for maintenance staff on the airfield. Security, notice of violation form, that's a requirement. If someone doesn't close a gate or a door, they're issued a notice of violation. Insert in operations, training sessions for our airline terminal employees to evacuate the building, and then hope to adopt the master plan in December. Airport Commission on April 15 recommended approval of the department's budget. That completes my presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker slips? No? And I should mention, for the record, we didn't have any speaker slips for a regular public comment either, so, just so we all know that. Okay, so to the council, then. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The cost of operating out of Santa Barbara Airport you showed was pretty high. Is that, do airports consider that profitability? I mean, is that, if they were going to make a decision, is that the chart that they would look at?
The airlines.
Airlines, yeah, I'm sorry.
Mayor Snyder and Councilwoman...
Mayor Snyder and Councilman Hotchkiss, they do look at it. And that number fluctuates, as you know, because the more in plane passengers you have, your costs or that rate would go down.
Right.
And our rate, while we are high, the reason that we're high isn't so much of the cost that the airlines are paying, but rather because we've been hit so dramatically with the loss of passengers. So they look at it, but in our airline negotiations, that has not been an issue.
Thank you. You mentioned paging issues. What's the problem? You didn't mention it, but I think you did.
It's your fault, Tom. The paging system at the airport has several components and has the routine announcements that you hear all the time about, don't leave your luggage unattended, that sort of thing. And then it also has literally paging at the gate for you to get onboard the flights. It's been intermittently not working, and so our staff has worked on it on a daily basis, but we've also called the company who developed it and the folks who do the software, trying to get it fixed. But I don't know exactly why it doesn't work, but we're investigating. If it doesn't come together and stay consistent, it's critical that we have a paging system and could have to replace it, and the estimate's around $300,000.
And does the... Do the companies that both did the hardware and the software share in that responsibility? In other words, are they going to be forthcoming, or do we have to... Will that come out of our pockets, do you know?
I believe it would come out of our pocket.
How long has this been going on?
During the last year, it's been particularly bad.
Hmm. So do we have to resort to, "Your flight's about to leave now"? What do we do?
Well, actually, we purchased as a backup standalone system so that you could, like, not karaoke, but you know, the standalone systems to announce the flights per... And we have one at each gate.
You mentioned that Amperzan, their lease runs out in what, two years, I think, is it, or...
May 9, 2018.
Have they indicated they want to stay?
As I have no direct communication with Amperzan at this point. The lease would revert, so we get the facilities as well as the ground lease back. And certainly, if they want to maintain their hangar space, corporates, we'd certainly do that.
Isn't FedEx in there now, too?
FedEx is there, and that lease, when it was negotiated, automatically reverts to the city when that lease expires.
So I'm just trying to figure out, are we going to have a hole in our pocket, or are we even actually going to be in better shape if they don't step up to the plate?
It's... I think we will be. Definitely will have the rent from those aviation facilities.
Right.
Now, the office building that's 30,000 square feet is vacant. You remember, that's where Deckers was located. And also, in the big hangers, there's a mezzanine area, and the majority of that is vacant. That's 34%. But the aviation side of things, I do believe we can lease out.
All right. And are we putting out feelers now about that potentially vacant space?
No, because we don't have control of the facility.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Jones, what's the maximum length of our commercial aircraft that we land at our airport or can land at our airport or ready to land?
757.
And what... When I was looking at the maximum length, what's the length of that?
I...
Big.
I'd...
Probably around 150 feet.
150 feet length.
Air Force Two was there.
Yeah, okay. So that would be like a C index. I'm just... I'm looking through at the FAA materials and the consultant's study, and I'm kind of, you know, as you look at the FAA requirements, currently, we are apparently satisfying those even over and above, but then again, it begs the question that we've all these years have had the level of service we have had. So why?
Why? When... In the late 80s, early 90s, United was flying a 707, Continental was flying a 737, American was flying an MD-80. All of those aircraft meet the Level C level of requirement. And even then, Level C, I believe, just asked for two firefighters. But then, as the majors left and the regials came in and the planes got smaller, then it's just been that way. And the reason that we've maintained the three is, quite frankly, because the airport could afford it. And we do recognize that having three and having two apparatus available is always good. So it's not that... It's not that the airport's saying, "We don't think that the level of service that we have today is not appro... Not good, but rather it's difficult to pay for it at this point."
She says, I'm reading another part of the consultant's advisory, and it talks about the trends where there are more and more airlines are going to larger aircraft.
Larger from 30 seats to 50 to 70. Yes, they are.
Okay, okay. I just was thinking about, here we have this shiny, brand-new airport with these glass jetways and all this, and the artist conception looked like big planes were all over the place. And I'm just thinking about our capacity to, if this trend continues, attract and maintain this ability to bring in these larger aircraft again. I'm also curious about the FAA standards and how they apply at other airports. Last time, I believe, when the chief was here, and the chief is here, I asked the question about my understanding about LAX's requirements and the real boots on the ground, and they were widely different. So that begs another question. What's the requirements versus common sense, public safety, a very low frequency but very dramatic incident? And are we going to be... Are we going to be ready for it? I mean, compromising public safety for the budget is, I mean, obviously, it's a big number, and I get that, but it also... There's not a feel-good thing about this. So can you direct me in the FAA standards versus where we've been and where other airports are and how they match up?
An index, the airport, is very similar to Santa Barbara in the number of flights that we have. Remember, we've gone from 44 flights a day to 21 flights a day. The size of the aircraft have... While we talk about them being regional jets and getting bigger and more seats, they're still very compact aircraft and not as long as a 737 or an A319. The airplane that Frontier flew is an A319. That's a... What do I want to call that? It's not a regional jet. It's a legacy-type aircraft. But you'd have to have... It's based on the size of the airplane. FAA requirements are based on the size of the airplane, its length primarily, and the number of flights per day that size airplane makes at an airport. So... And it has to have at least five flights a day by that size of an aircraft. So an A319 for Frontier to come in one time a day didn't generate that need. If it came in five times a day, it would push up our need for increased service. FAA... Or you mentioned LAX. You know, they have international flights. It's a totally different... There's no comparison between Santa Barbara and LAX. Fresno shares the field with the military, so their index is probably, I don't know if it's a C index, but with military coming in with loaded, then they would... They'd need a bigger response. And it is difficult.
I was talking about the FAA requirements and what the ratings are, because my understanding last time was that the FAA requirement for LAX was really only three, and they've got 24.
Oh.
I may be wrong about that. That's how I remember it. I don't know.
Two stations. FAA has... I mean, LAX has two stations, and I would imagine they have...
It's because of the distance. They can't get to the runway in time if they don't have two.
Just thinking about how the FAA rates things, that's... I'm a layman here, so I'm just kind of poking around. And at one point in time, we had, I think it was called Tracor Aviation, that we... They refitted it. They brought in very big planes, clearly unloaded, and it was pretty impressive to see one of those fly in and out of the airport. And if that situation were to reappear, would that require... Would that bring back the idea of having something, you know, more in terms of fire suppression capability? Once again, you've got a much bigger airplane.
Once again, keep in mind that FAA regulations are for commercial service. The activity that took place at Tracor was not commercial. Those planes did, as you just said, they came in empty with fuel, no people, and were here for maintenance. So while it's a... And the chances of that coming back are slim, just because we don't have... One, we don't have the facility available any longer, and the staffing needed for an FAA repair station would be hard to generate at this point.
And last, I got a little hypothetical. Your airport-fired station would respond for a medical emergency at the terminal, would it not?
It would initially, I believe, and then AMR would come or the county would come landside, depending on where the location is. But I believe that they would respond. They would come.
Be the first responders.
They'd be first, and then... But we also get the county and also AMR.
Right. At that time, would you have to shut the airport down temporarily while that response was in progress?
If we had two fire positions, I would assume one fire position would respond to the medical emergency while the other one stands by with the aircraft, with the apparatus on the field.
Can one firefighter work the apparatus?
I believe they can.
Okay.
They drive it and can drive and do the foam, the turret.
You mind if I bring up Chief McElroy just for a moment, please? I like, because I, once again, I'm just trying to pull this together in my head, because, I mean, there's a reason why there are... Is the level of staffing we do have, and I'm a little reticent to just cut out public safety, just because we need to fix something on the whole of the budget. Chief McElroy, if you wouldn't mind, would you describe how that works out there? What is... Why do we have the personnel we have? And if there's an incident, how does a response work? And if there were only two and there was a medical emergency, I mean, what would that mean?
Mayor Snyder, Councilmember Ross, the staffing we have allows us to operate both 1,500 GPM crash trucks, and it allows for one person to operate, to drive and operate the turrets on the truck, and a third person for communication and supervision. So that's been the model that we've used out there for the last 25 years. In terms of a medical emergency, I'd have to disagree that we would be faced with deciding to respond to the emergency with two people, medical emergency with two people, or stay in service on the airfield. In no other operation in the city do we respond to one person to any call, either a medical call or a fire call. And I would be reluctant to, while the FAA standard says one, I would be reluctant to say that I would send a one person to any type of commercial air problem on a vehicle. Does that answer your...
Yes, it does. Thank you. Right. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Just a couple of questions. Is the lease for the restaurant signed, or we're just going through the remodeling essentially at this point?
It is signed. We brought that to council several months ago, so it is signed. It's executed.
And then the difference between last year's budget and this year's budget, where we... I don't recall us dipping into reserves so much at the beginning of last year's budget, and that's the loss of Frontier in this past year. Is that why there's a hole that...
Frontier, this year, coupled with the loss of American the prior year, yes. And then I... We had very little capital expenditure in this year's budget, in the 15 budget.
Thanks.
Anyone else? The place where Deckers was before, so as Mr. Hotchkiss was saying, it's empty, so we're not seeing much revenue from there, but we don't have control because that's part of the Amperzan lease?
That's correct.
So is it... I mean, is it worth trying to talk with them now to see if we could fill the space for, I mean, if there's a revenue option, or is that just really not something?
Amperzan would receive... Mayor Snyder, Amperzan would receive all the revenue on the rental. The airport has a ground lease, a very old ground lease that...
Okay. So it doesn't matter if it's empty or not? We're still getting the ground lease payments through the lease?
Correct. The airport doesn't benefit from having the building rented.
Okay, all right. So, all right, so that's a whole other conversation when that lease... Okay, well, I don't see any other lights on. I'll just say I'm really reluctant to cut staffing at the station, at the airport. So I'm not quite sure how... And I know Finance Committee looked at this, so we're going to have to figure this out, but I'm not there yet. So I don't know if I will be there, but we're going to have to... And I don't know, and maybe we have time. We can monitor this in the next, during the year, and see what other things we can do in terms of enhancing other service, you know? Because that seems like if we have... I know there's been a lot of marketing work in trying to recruit other service coming to the airport, which we all want anyway.
Exactly.
And that would obviously plug up the budget hole, but... And maybe we just follow this much more carefully in the next fiscal year. I'm not... But I'm not sure if I'm really ready July 1 or January 1, I guess, to just say through attrition. So that's just one of seven up here, but... Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I think, to me, this sort of big picture over time comes down to looking at the revenue side, looking at the expense side. You've done all this. On the revenue side, the big variable is the 34% vacancy assumption for the Amperzan lease. If you assume that, you know, that's a very conservative projection. I understand why you do that. If you didn't assume that and we were able to get a tenant, that's a $500,000 a year annual swing, and that kind of solves the problem. So to me, that's job number one over the next few years, is to get that space rented. In addition, and you're doing this all the time, and I know that personally because I was helping with the conversation with an airline, adding airlines is a big net win all the way around, and you're doing that as best as you can. On the expense side, there's two variables with staffing. It's ARF or it's other airport staff. And, you know, and I think we need to evaluate that in that context. I don't think it's... I don't think the starting place for that is ARF. I think it's staffing overall, and I think that, you know, if you look back, and this is just the hard truth, is that over time, airport staff has been consistent and planes have dropped off. And so there's... That's the tension here on that expense side. Well, planes have stopped landing here, gone other places, and the revenue that comes with them went other places, too. And then there's the only other thing that we have control over, really, is the non-grant funded capital program, the schedule of that, you know? And that's a tricky balance, but those are the four moving parts in this decision, and I think we got... Those are the things we've got to wrestle with through this budget process.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, I'll only give a little caution on the Deckers office space. It's pretty old and not in good shape, and so it'll require an investment of funds to get it up to a leasable area or once you sign a lease, much like the elephant bar. So I don't think we should assume really good positive cash flow in year one from that, because I think we're going to have to invest money to get it into a condition to have it be leasable. But there is positive net flow in the long term of that, absolutely.
Yep. Same with the direct relief process. I mean, I see that long-term. I mean, the whole point, even though we're short-term losing some lease revenue with the space, we're going to gain as soon as these units are up and leased up. I mean, it's going to be much more than what we are currently getting for land. So, I mean, I think that we have to think a little more long-term there, so... Ms. Maria?
Thank you. So in terms of the... You have here in Slide 51, the options. You're looking at eliminating or freezing four to five airport positions. Are any of those unfilled right now? So they would just stay unfilled and there wouldn't be, you know, a loss of position?
Mayor Snyder, Councilwoman Marina, we have the assistant director's position remains vacant at this point, and a potential of an executive secretary's position being vacant, but we really don't at this point have that many vacancies at the airport. Patrol is fully funded, maintenance is fully funded. So no, it would... Should we go that direction, then we would work with human resources and other city departments to try to transition the employees. But it... There are not four or five vacancies at this point, no.
Okay. I agree with the mayor that it's a... I don't agree with reducing safety out there, and I know this looks like a tough decision. So for the year 2016, it's 300,000 shortfall?
That's correct.
Okay. And we could take that from reserves?
Policy reserves, yes. We don't have... If we maintain our schedule... We don't have, if we maintain our schedule for capital improvements, and we will have to use policy reserves.
And so, so that's an option as well, then? Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think because, obviously, staff's gonna be trying to guess this out as we, as we go forward, I would at least weigh in to say that I've, I've had a conversation with Chief McElroy about this. I've, we've obviously had several sessions here, we had finance, we had a closer review of the, of this issue. And while I think that all of us have the, at our bedrock, the, the preference that we maintain our full staffing of fire personnel, hearing the chief say that they can manage this operation with three fewer firefighters, and I think of it as an interim basis, I could support that. And I just, as I say, just so that as, I don't know whether four of us would end up in that position as we get into July, but I wanted to at least put that out there. I, and I certainly don't, don't do it, I mean, it's, it's a loss, it's a deeper loss in terms of our capacity to mobilize firefighters for, obviously wildfires being our biggest, most commonest big event, and we would be less, less powerful in that situation. And that's, that's a piece of it that really concerns me. However, the, the financial integrity, I'm, it's clearly we got wrong-footed with our terminal. We, even though we did great with the bidding and the, the cost of building the terminal was, was much better than we, than we budgeted. But it's still is, it's, it's a, it's a facility that was headed toward higher passenger count, and it just, we just ended up, as I say, wrong-footed is the best term that I can come up with. And we need to, need to defend ourselves for, I think, a short term, while perhaps it's the ampersand office building, perhaps it's the roll-up facilities that come out of the DRI sale and that development. Any of those sort of movable pieces could repack our financing to allow us to go forward. But if it doesn't, and I know Mr. Hart, for example, talks about the business cycle, where's that, where's, where's this blessed business cycle go? I, I would just be able to tolerate an interim reduction of staffing out there.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Just a quick, quick question. Is our airport rating, if there is such a thing, affected at all by the ARF decision that you're talking about? Does the FAA look at us and say, I don't know, B-class or whatever?
The airport, I believe we, FAA has the indexes in the airport based on the service level that we require establish that index, and we publish that index. And certainly when FAA does their annual inspection of the airport, through our Part 139 inspection, they check with the fire department on training records and the equipment, that sort of thing. But it's listed in the regulations, it's, it's pretty, as we said, based on your aviation, or commercial aviation requirements that it's established.
We have almost 50%, 40% fewer flights than when this level was originally set, is that correct?
50% less now than we had 10 years ago.
And that, and we've had the same ARF level during that time?
Had the same ARF level since the firefighters took over in 1990, yes, sir.
So clearly that has an effect on the need out there, if I can put it that way?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So this will be one of those, we have to make those decisions when we have the June 1 meeting. We don't have to, but, okay. That's in the big picture. But I think we're gonna need to know both options of, on June 1. Okay, anything else? Okay.
Mayor, yes. So Councilmember Wyatt and I are on the committee to update the zoning ordinance, and we were talking about the preserving manufacturing and other light industrial in the city limits. And then we started talking about, well, what's out at the airport? And Mr. Cato said that your master plan is really about airport footprint, not so much the other lands, and we were wondering when, you know, east or north of Hollister, when, when will you look at that? Or have, do you already have a plan? Or I guess I'm interested in, in whatever you have in place, in, in terms of, you know, preserving the ability for that kind of business and commerce to take place.
Thank you, yes. Mayor Snyder and Councilwoman Maria, the, in 1997, the airport adopted, or the city adopted, the airport-specific plan.
Okay.
And the specific plan addresses light industrial development on the north side in the 95 acres that we have. But we too need to update our ordinance, but we felt it would be, since downtown was going forward first, that we would, once you get it done, then we'll come along and, and review our ordinances as well.
Thank you.
Great, Mr. Hart?
You know, just one thing I think it'd be helpful to me for the June discussion is to have a path that sort of takes pieces of the things that I was talking about, you know, that looks at the vacant positions at the airport, looks at slowing down the non-grant funded capital program over a couple of years, maybe assumes something between the 34% vacancy rate, you know, plugging in the costs that Mr. Casey mentioned, and being more optimistic about being able to release that with, considering those costs, some combination of those as another path to get to where we need to go to. I think that would be helpful to have that. And you have a lot of that already, but it's just not super defined, and. Okay, thank you.
Happy to. Thank you. Who's next? Is it Waterfront? Waterfront, all right. A to W. Mr. Bossy? Mr. Reed? Mr. Reed? Yes.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm here today with Mick Cronman, our Harbor, Scott Reedman, Waterfront Director. I'm here with Mick Cronman, our Harbor Operations Manager, Carl Triberg, our Waterfront Facilities Manager, and Brian Bossy, our Business Manager, that's gonna be giving the presentation. And I would also like to add that we have our Vice Chair of the Harbor Commission with us today, Commissioner Jim Sloan. So with that, Brian, why don't you take a shot?
I will do just that. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. As Mr. Reedman just indicated, my name is Brian Bossy, I'm the Waterfront Business Manager, and I'm here to give you our recommendations for the budget for fiscal year 2016 and 17. I will be focusing primarily on 16. And jumping right in, our organizational chart. At the top, we have our Waterfront Director, and that's Mr. Reedman, and as Scott just went through naming us managers, under our Business Services, which is the programs I manage, our Property Management, our Financial Management Program, as well as our Parking Services. Under our Harbor Operations Program, we have our Harbor Patrol and Marina Management, that's the management of the 1,139 slips, and that's under Mr. Mick Cronman. And as far as the Facilities Division, which is managed by Carl Triberg, we have our Facilities Maintenance, as well as our Design and Capital. So they are responsible for maintaining all the waterfront and harbor properties, both in Sterns Wharf and the harbor, so not an easy task. As a whole, we have 46 full-time employees amidst nine programs, and you can see how the permanent staff is broken down there. We have had no permanent staffing increase in 13 years, and we do have a number of hourly employees. We have a few in Harbor Patrol, a number in Facilities, and then a considerable amount in our Parking Services. And those hourly employees fluctuate, at least on the Parking Services side, we're ramping up for the busy summer months, so we do add a number of hourly employees for that purpose. As far as our revenue is concerned for fiscal year 16, we are, our estimated budgeting revenue is $13,448,598, and that is overall a 6% increase over our amended budget for this fiscal year. 41% of that comes from our Marina Management Program, that's things such as slip fees, transfer fees, and things like that. Just under 38% comes from our Property Management Program, those are all the leases we have with our retail folks, as well as our restaurants and others. We have a very small chunk, under 1%, coming from our interest income. And then our Parking Services, just shy of 20%, and that includes the eight waterfront lots, including Sterns Wharf. I believe it comes out to about 2,800 parking stalls that we do manage. So that, in a nutshell, is our revenue, our forecasted revenue. And here is our, here are our forecasted expenditures for fiscal year 16, $12,658,200, that's a 2.8% increase over fiscal year 2015. I should let you know, I should have let you know a few slides ago, but you'll notice on the slides, a little box there with the appropriate page number in your budget document, so if you do want to follow along or have a question, you can refer to that page. First on the list is our salaries and benefits, which make up 49% of the overall operating expenditure. Supplies and services are next, that includes our allocated costs, and that comes in at about 31%. Then we go into our debt service. We have a number of debts out there, including our loans that we receive from the Division, the State Division of Boating and Waterways, which is help, which has funded our Marina One Replacement Program. We have special projects, that includes about a little over $100,000 for the lifeguard services we pay for, as well as shuttle bus, our share of the shuttle bus program, and July 4 fireworks, as well as the Parade of Lights fireworks in the, in the winter season. Non-capital equipment is right at 1%, and our transfers out are proposed to be $75,000. So again, that was the numbers, very brief overview of our numbers as far as our, our program activities and highlights. I've also got page numbers in here for you to follow along, or if you have questions. Our Administrative Support and Communities Relations Division will continue to provide information to the public about the department, including our many community events, including our very popular Harbor and Seafood Festival, July 4. We're very much involved with that, along with parks and a whole, pretty much every department in the city, as well as our Parade of Lights program, which many of you attend in the Christmas time of the year. Property Management will continue to ensure our tenants receive the services entitled under their leases, and that the public receives a high level of service. We have very good working relationships with our tenants, I think that adds to the environment down there. We very rarely have any turnover in our, in our leases, and I think that speaks volumes to the relationship we have and the facilities that we provide to the public. As far as Parking Services, we will maintain an annual operating expense of not more than, than 40% of the revenue collected. This has been a really neat process to watch, the implementation of our Luke Pay and Display Program, which has gone before the City Council. And by you approving that, we've installed these in a number of our parking lots, and it has drastically, drastically reduced our operating costs, and our revenue continues to go up. It's so much easier for folks to put in their card as opposed to fold up a dollar bill and do some origami to shove that thing in there. So it's, it's very helpful, and it's, it's, it's done great things, and we look to roll it out in a number of other lots, and you'll see that in a few slides here. Our Marina Management Program will continue to coordinate our waterfront events, July 4, our Harbor and Seafood Festival, as well as Parade of Lights. And our Facilities Design and Capital, again, this is under Carl's guidance, will work with the Corps of Engineers' Channel Dredging Program, which you all are very much aware of, to ensure safe boat travel in and out of the harbor. We continue to work with them and have communications with them on a regular basis. One big component, or I should say important component of our budget on the revenue side of things, are cruise ships. They've been coming since, I believe, 2000, a few visits here, a few visits there, over the last four or five years, they've increased their number of visits. Right now, we're, for a year, we're roughly at about 28. They come in the shoulder seasons, the February, March, April, a little bit of May, as well as latter, latter part of September, October, November. We work very closely with Santa Barbara Downtown, visit Santa Barbara and the Chamber to accommodate these folks. We're routinely told that when these passengers get off and are greeted at our station, that it's, it's the nicest place they come to. In a lot of other cities, they just pull up, they're dumped, and you see a whole bunch of wide-eyed tourists not knowing exactly where to go, in much bigger cities than ours. So we're, we're very much organized and directed, and they, they love that, as do the cruise ships themselves. For the fall, we anticipate 14 cruise ship visits. The gross revenue from those visits is almost $226,000. We do increase the number of MTD shuttles on those particular days, costs about $4,500 per visit, and that adds up to about, almost $51,000. Our waterfront shuttle fee, that's the standard shuttle that runs up and down the waterfront, and $38,000 is half of our annual portion of that fee. Public Works fees, we get fees to close off one lane of traffic for part of the day, those are about $300 apiece. And then miscellaneous fees are things that, whether it's the cruise ship industry, the, the groups that they're part of, we also help fund the Chamber, as well as downtown Santa Barbara for the staff. We supply the shirts, the jackets, the hats, and, and all that other type of stuff, so we all, all the folks out there look good. So in the end, we're estimating about $127,000 in net revenue from cruise ship visits in the fall. As far as our capital improvement program for fiscal year 16, it's just under $3 million, some of the significant capital projects, although they're all important. We have our Parking Services, $200,000, as I just indicated, for an expansion of the Luke Pay and Display Parking System, as well as we're looking into a, the replacement of the parking chaos at the base of Sterns Wharf. We have new equipment there, and anytime it rains, it's not the most waterproof construction in the world. It's, it's old and it needs some improving. We also have $125,000 slated for our Sealanding Gangway ADA improvements, which will be a much-needed improvement at Sealanding. And of course, our big project over the last five, six, seven years is our Marina One Replacement Program. We'll be moving on to Phase Six, which are the H and I fingers, and that's to the tune of just under $1.7 million. Again, that is a loan from the Division of Boating and Waterways.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bossy, on the, we'll back on the cruise ship slide. How are the PD funded that are there for those visits?
That's a great question. The PD are funded by the cruise ships themselves, and so they'll send us the money, and then we disperse that to the PD, and we don't take a cut of that, go straight to the PD. So the cruise ships do fund them.
And who funds the Coast Guard to keep those rogue yachty's at bay?
I'm gonna move on to the next slide. This is an example of one of our, it was a small project, but it was very important. This is the Sealanding Walkway, this is before, this was a couple of years ago. You can see the seashells, what we lovingly call the condos on the right, and the diseased myoporum on the left. And this is an after photo, new palm trees, and drought-tolerant landscaping sidewalk, much, much-needed improvement. It was a $250,000 project, we received about $6,000 in grant funds from Santa Barbara Beautiful, and this won a Santa Barbara Beautiful Award in the fall of 2014. So we're very proud of that project, looks great out there for everybody who comes in and out of the harbor. Our proposed fee adjustments for fiscal year 2016. Our slip fees, we are proposing to increase those by 2%. That would be consistent with fiscal year 13, 14, and 15, which were also 2%, and prior to that, they were a bit higher. Our parking permit fee, this is for the annual permit, currently they're $95. We're looking to increase those by $5 to an even $100. That would also trickle down to the slipholders, who currently pay $70 for their permit, that would go to $75. The last time this fee was increased was The last time this fee was increased was back in 2008. Our visitor fee, these are for folks who come in on their boats, either traveling through or actually coming to Santa Barbara as a destination for a couple of days. We're looking, we're proposing to increase that by 10 cents to make it an even $1 per foot. And last on our list is our slip transfer fee. Now, I should say that the top three fees were all presented to and approved by our Harbor Commission back in March. However, the slip transfer fee, we have a number of slip holders, and they had to abstain. So we lost our quorum, so they'll be looking at this, this particular slip transfer fee increase next week, on the 21st. And we don't, we don't foresee any problems with that. They have heard this already, and they just weren't able to vote on it. So the slip transfer fee, this is, we're proposing a $25 per foot increase. This is what we've been doing for a number of years down in the harbor. And those would be our four main slip fees. And again, the slip transfer fee will be voted on next week by our Harbor Commission.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bossy, so I've heard a lot of anecdotal conversations, particularly among yacht brokers, about slip transfer fees and how the transfer fee itself is becoming almost greater than the value of the smaller boats that they're selling. I can't imagine you're not aware of that conversation. Is that something that's been approached in the Harbor Commission level?
This is something we do factor in, and I should have mentioned before that both the 20-foot slips and our 25-foot slips, those transfer fees have been frozen. Our 25-foot, which is, we have the most 25-foot slips out of any size slip. Those were frozen last year, and our 20-foot's were frozen about five, six, eight years ago. But to answer the bigger question of how it impacts the yacht brokers, I'll turn that over to Mr. McCronman, our operations manager.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, we have been approached with the same notion, both from slip permittees and from the brokers. And so we've kept a close eye on slip transfer numbers and the size of slips that are transferring. And the size of slips in the 20- to 25-foot range are either remaining stable or increasing, actually. So the evidence seems to suggest that the slip transfer fee hasn't dampened interest in transferring slips of those size.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Quick question. How does the visitor fee work? Is that a sort of honor system?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, no, that's a fee charged to individuals who come, they bring their boat in, they come up to the office, they tell us how many days they're going to stay, they pay the fee, and then we assign them a slip.
Okay, so, but they have to come up voluntarily?
Yes.
If they don't show, what happens?
We do slip, what we call slip checks, twice a day, Harbor Patrol does, and they write a V or an O, vacant or occupied.
Right.
And we cross-check that with people who have paid and the boats that are supposed to be in those slips, and we know who's where, where they should be.
Is this comparable to Ventura, for instance? Do you know?
It is. You know, we're fairly, in price?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're fairly comparable, a little bit along the lower end, but we're slowly getting toward the median market. We try, we try to be, you know, user-friendly as we can, maintaining, you know, the budgetary necessities, but right-about market a little less.
So people don't grumble about this?
No.
Great.
I mean, I can't say people don't, people grumble about, you know?
Anything, right?
All kinds of things. But relative to visitor fees and the level of our visitor fees, no, we don't hear complaints on that.
Great, thank you.
And that's a nice segue into my next slide. Mr. Hotchkiss, what we do when we assess and look at our fees every year, we send out in late January, survey to 18 marinas, all the way from Santa Cruz down to Huntington Beach, and we ask them questions on a whole host of different items. How much do you charge for a replacement key card? How much is your parking? How much are your parking permits? What are your slip fees? And it goes on and on and on. So what we do is we compile all that, and really, in every category, we are more than competitive. As far as the $1 visitor fee, those generally range from $1.15 to $2 throughout all these marinas. So we are on the lower end. Our slip fees, I'll get into that in this next slide. So a 2% slip fee, what does that mean? And here's what we did. We look at our, a whole host of our different slip lengths, 20 all the way to 60-foot. What does that change per foot? So with a slip length of 20 feet, it's about 17 cents per foot. How does that stack up on a month basis? It's about $3.37 added to your bill. Again, 25s are kind of our most predominant slip. That adds up to about $4.42 of an increase per month. And obviously, your 60s, you're going up a little higher to the $14 a month. So with the 2% every year, we find that people are comfortable with that. As Mr. McCrum said, I think, you know, we can find something to complain about all the time, but it's a whole lot easier than looking, not doing any increases and then looking down and bumping it up 10%. I should also say that the 2% or the slip fee increase is required, it's a covenant as part of our Division and Boating and Waterways loan agreement. They require us to bump up our slip fees so that they're assured that they're still going to get their money back over time. So that's also part of it. Now again, getting back to that 18-marina survey that we do, here's just a sampling. I picked out some, tried to do a little local and a little south. You've got Santa Barbara on the top, you see the marinas listed on the left, your 30, 40, 50, and 60-foot slips, and what those cost per month. And then on the far right, which is very telling, is the occupancy rating. So you'll see Santa Barbara, on every one of those slip fee lengths, we are considerably less than other folks. I should let you know that Ventura Isle, Anacapa Isle, and Bahia Carrillo are all down in Ventura. Those are privately owned, and included in their, their slip fee rate is the possessory interest tax. And I'll get back to that in a second. And then on the bottom, you'll see Long Beach Shoreline, which is another public marina down south. So you, one question comes up, yeah, but we pay possessory interest tax. And so we work with the county assessor, we're required to send them all of our information, them all of our information every year, and they do the possessory interest tax. And for example, on a 20, I believe it's a 25-foot slip, which of course, I don't have up here, it's the addition of about $305 to our, to our slip fee. So what it does is it adds up to about 25 additional dollars per month. For a 35, it's about $61 a month. And for a 50-footer, I do have that on the list, you'd have to add about $160 to our slip fee. So $160, you're at $700, still well below what other marinas are charging. So we're very competitive, and you know, we have really good facilities as well. That's a little boasting right there.
Mr. Bossy, but in those other marinas, are they also capturing rents from concessions like we are here in our Harbor Department? Like restaurants, retail, all that? Or they stand alone operations as marina vessel-serving situations?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. These are primarily standalones. Yeah, so it's, they're generating all that revenue on their own. So we have been, as Mr. Sloan can attest to the Harbor Commission probably too many times, talking about budget over the last five or six months. Again, they moved to forward a recommendation to city council for approval of the waterfront department's budget for fiscal years 2016 and 17. Again, they are going to vote on that last proposed fee adjustment next Thursday, which is the slip fee transfer. And that completes my presentation. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, on the tour that staff gave me, was that three, three months ago or whatever, some time back, of the waterfront, very informative. But one topic came up that I thought that I wanted to raise, and that is that this being a very good time for the waterfront, for one thing, in that the drought conditions have translated into higher parking fees and just basically more people using the waterfront. And with that sort of bulge of revenue, the concept of taking our fleet of boats and making that into a motor pool, or what the, whatever term one wants to use, a, an analogy to our vehicle system, we talked about that briefly. Is that, it sounds like a good idea to me, so I wanted to at least ask staff to comment on that for, at this time, and obviously, it's not part of your proposal today, but I wanted to at least ask you to talk about that.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember White.
Maybe frame it a little bit more. I didn't say it very well, so perhaps you could talk about that a little bit for my colleagues.
What we discussed, and also the Harbor Commission recommended as well, was establishing a vessel replacement fund, which is a mini reserve within the waterfront reserves, a new reserve. And I believe Michael Peace actually established a separate reserve fund for us. And it was really at the 11th hour of the budget process, but we got it into this budget on that second pie chart that Brian showed you, there was a transfer out of $75,000. And so we're starting off with $75,000 a year to go into this vessel replacement fund, so that a few years down the line, we have a little money in the piggy bank to go replace, you know, we have two vessels that are 30 years old, and the newest one's 15 or so. And they're all in need of repowering and eventually replacement. So hopefully, when we get there, we'll have accumulated that money.
Oh, I didn't catch it in the, in the presentation, but
We didn't point it out.
That is there.
It's there for this year and next year and onward.
On, ongoing. Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to solid waste, and I'm going to have to step out, so Protem Hart is going to take over, and don't take it personally. Trash is good, or recycling's good, whatever. Okay.
All right, good afternoon, Mr. Protem and council members. My name is Matt Four. I'm the Environmental Services Manager. I'm here to talk about the solid waste fund budget for FY16. Just to review, what does Environmental Services do? This solid waste fund funds the operations of the Environmental Services Division of Finance. And we, I broke it down into four things. We negotiate and manage the franchise agreement with Marborg, and that's really to design and ensure that customers know about and utilize the, what I would call, some of the best solid waste services in California. I think, I think we have a good contract, and I think we have a good hauler, and we want to make sure it stays that way. We assist residents and businesses to understand and fully utilize those services. We have a lot of services, some that get used more than others, and we want people to maximize. We want ratepayers to get the full value and really utilize all those services that they have available to them. To that end, then, we get the word out. We devise and execute community education campaigns. We do a lot of media development of all formats, radio, television, print, electronic, web presence, some social media, to really get the word out, to promote diversion and really a clean community, and in doing so, again, get it back to the value that the ratepayers are paying. And then finally, we plan for the city's future solid waste needs. We do that in two primary ways, or actually, three. The first is through every 10 years or so that we negotiate a new contract with the hauler. We're looking forward 10 years or so. The second, on a more timely basis, is through the development review process, and we help architects and developers appropriately size their waste enclosures and plan for the solid waste needs that that business or residential property will generate. And thirdly, through larger infrastructural projects, like the Resource Recovery Project that we've brought to you several times over the past couple of years. So that's what we do. Who does the work? We have eight full-time equivalent employees that do that work. This is a staffing change from last, or from the current year, FY15. When we came to you last year, we had 8.5 FTEs, and we are proposing a stat, to continue a mid-year staffing adjustment, decrease our staffing levels down to eight. There were a couple reasons for that. The change was the deletion of the Environmental Services Supervisor position. That's a position that was vacant for a number of years as we went through the recession. And it got to the point, frankly, where I thought, you know, I have a good staff, they do a very good job. The span of control for me is direct reports is one I think I can handle. So I, we traded that in, and in exchange, I did increase one of the outreach educators from 1.5 FTEs to two. So the net impact was a half-position downward, and certainly, a lot of financial savings as a result, due to the salary and benefit package between the two. So there is the manager, as I said. We have two full-time equivalent recycling educators. Those are the staff members that go out and work with the businesses, 1,809 businesses in the city, to set up recycling programs, to maximize our food scrap program, to, if you'll recall in our franchise agreement, Marborg is charged with taking some of the larger customers in the city, the large generators of, in the business and multi-unit sector. We're taking everybody who gets to their minimum of 30% diversion. We'll take them above that if we can, and we also have everybody else. So they're doing that work. Then I have three journey-level classifications of environmental services specialists. Those are broken into three categories. One that really runs the Looking Good Santa Barbara program, oversees the single-use bag ordinance, and does all of the city facility diversion for the dozens of city facilities that we have. So we make sure we set a good example. The second specialist really does all of the outreach. It plans, directs, coaches, and trains the entry-level field staff, and then takes on the real complicated share agreements, where we have six or seven businesses on the 500 block of State Street with real impacted space, and we work out these very complex share agreements, train everybody, set up the billing to work right. And they also take care of our real large generators, like the school district. We have a lot of involvement with the school district because they generate so much waste, and they're highly motivated. The third position is kind of a behind-the-scenes position. It has two primary tasks. The first is development review. It's something I'll talk about more in this presentation, but it's something that we have gotten into in the past two years, where we are at the front end while things are still on pencil and paper before it's built, helping people to plan accordingly to maximize the services, save money, and take care of their waste and recycling needs. So we, we looked at about 120 plans, major plans, last year. This will continue to become more and more of a cornerstone of what we do, but this position does that, works with architects, work with the developers and community development. The second is really managing the solid waste portion of our utility billing system. We have a lot of users and a lot of service changes upwards of 60 or 70 a day, and we need to keep a very close eye on that to make sure that, that our data is sound, that our financial forecasts that go into our rates every year are sound and protected. Then just on the bottom row, I have a half-time code enforcement officer who does very good work and also runs our e-waste collection events, the half-time outreach coordinator that does all of that media development, and then one clerical position. So take-home lesson, we're down a half, half FTE by design moving forward. As we get into the budget for the solid waste fund, to look at appropriations, total appropriations for the coming year are about $20.8 million. The bulk of that, as you can see, it's really a pass-through of the funds that are paid to the city by city ratepayers for trash and recycling services. And then we pass those on to Marborg as their service fee, under contractually negotiated rates. So of the $20.8 million, about 2.8 million of that funds the environmental services operations, about 13%, and the remainder goes to Marborg. Of those remaining categories, those operational categories, salaries and benefits are about Allocated costs and services supplies, as you can see, are about 2, 2 and 1/2. And then the one I will highlight is the public containers. It's a small percentage of the budget, but this is something that we've done a lot of work on this current fiscal year, stemming from last year when you approved a small fee or rate increase to fund the repair and replacement of the 1,300 or 1,400 public containers that we have in the city. And I'll, the last note I'll make is that this $20.8 million represents about a 2.6% overall increase to the appropriations from last year, so it's fairly nominal. If we get into the specific categories, then, and there's one typo, and I apologize, and that's on the, the public containers, this chart, the percentage change compares the FY16 the public containers. This chart, the percentage change compares the FY '16 recommended budget to the FY '15 projected, so where we're going to land this year versus what we're requesting. And obviously, an increase from $43,000 to 153 is much more than 75%. It's more like 250. The reason for this large increase is that the first step to enacting that overall comprehensive repair and replacement schedule is to obtain approval from the design boards, from the Architectural Board of Review and the Historic Landmarks Commission, on an overall master plan. And we are going through that process. We didn't complete it this year. We're going back again in June. But as a result, we didn't spend the bulk of this money. Our intention is to put about $90,000 into reserves and then catch up next year once we have master plan approval.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm here.
May I ask, Councilmember Hotchkiss and I were at the Milpis Action Task Force meeting today, and there was some talk of needing more public trash containers on Milpis and some other areas. There was just talk about a need, not specific locations. How would someone request installation of a new container?
They would do that in two ways. There are two instances where new locations get put in. The first is somebody just asks, you know, a regular resident asks. In that case, we have a list of the ones that are being requested, and we have, until now, we haven't had the funding source, but now that we do, we're putting them in. And normally, the way we prioritize those are by reported need and by traffic. So if it's an area where there are a lot of people, and we get multiple instances of, hey, there's litter here all the time, then we prioritize that location and we put it in. The other instance is through the entitlement process or through some construction where a private developer, say, is going to build a building. A lot of times, through the development review process, they will be required to put in containers. They would fund that initial capital cost, and they will just choose the container that is ultimately approved by the design boards. So that's how that would work.
Okay. I'll be following up with you or inviting you to a meeting.
Sure. I'd be glad to. Sure. So, as I said, overall, the appropriations are increasing by about 2.6%. It's fairly nominal this year. If we look at the various categories, the salaries and benefits is a little bit higher than normal, and that really reflects salary savings from this year from vacancies versus full staffing next year. The only other one that I would call some attention to, other than the public containers, is the special projects. Special projects really is dominated by the cost to dispose of household hazardous waste. And through an agreement with the county and through UCSB, we have an arrangement where city residents and small generating businesses can take their household hazardous waste out to UCSB and have it properly disposed. It's expensive. This year, the costs to dispose are not going up. It's relatively flat. This cost increase reflects a loss of revenue, because in that overall regional program that we fund jointly with the county, there is a revenue component, which is bottle-and-can refund money that we get from the state. That fund at the state level has been having trouble for several years, and as a consequence, the state has dramatically cut the revenue that they're distributing to the local municipalities. So our costs go up because our revenue offset went down. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but why is it struggling at the state level? What is the problem with the fund?
It really has to do with a change in law several years ago, where the fund was designed in this five- and 10-cent, you know, bottle-and-can, pay-at-the-point-of-purchase amount, was designed for a fairly tight, narrowly-construed type of bottle-and-can. Several years ago, the state changed that law and said, well, we'll take just about everything. You know, we'll take a lot more stuff. And that change in the materials they would take and the market value of those did not align with the convenience that they were trying to afford consumers. And so the fund is upside down.
So the revenue that comes from charging everybody that five cents, is there's more cost to dispose of that, those products, than that five-cent revenue generates?
There is more redemption than what the markets will bear. You know, the commodity markets.
Commodity prices have collapsed because of the volume.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
So, any questions on appropriations? Okay. So if we turn our attention to revenues, very similar to the appropriations, our revenues are $20.95 million for FY '16. And again, similar to appropriations, the revenues are dominated by the solid waste fees. That's the revenue portion of the customer rates for trash and recycling services. Of every dollar that comes in from customers for curbside service, about 10 cents on the dollar goes to fund environmental services operations. So we keep what's called program fees. We have some additional revenue through recycling. We broker and market our recyclable commodities, both through Marborg and through Gold Coast Recycling down in Ventura, and that represents about 1.7% of our revenue. We get some funding from Marborg through our franchise agreement for public education at about 0.7%. And then we do have our dedicated funding source for public container maintenance now as well. So total revenues are about $20.95, $2 million. Not much change. And the one point I'd like to make, just for context, is that the rate of growth on revenues this year in FY '16 is about 0.6%. So our revenues are very flat, and our expenditures have gone up by about 2.6%. The reason for that is that our fees, solid waste fees and program support fees, are directly tied to the rate adjustments that we pay to Marborg. And those are a CPI adjustment every year, and increases in the tipping fees that we pay to Taheguis Landfill and to various other processors. Unfortunately, on both counts, the CPI remains very flat, which means Marborg didn't get a very big increase this year, which means we didn't get an increase in revenue this year. And the tipping fees at Taheguis went up just a fraction. And so for this year, and hopefully this year alone, our revenues are flat, and our expenditures at 2.6% are reasonable, but they are different. So if we look in detail at the revenues, again, this chart, the percent change compares FY '15 projected to the FY '16 recommended budget. And you can see that, for the most part, there's very little change on anything related to customer rates, the solid waste fees, the program fees. Our recycling revenues stay about the same. We see a 100% decrease in grants. Luckily, that's only about $20,000 a year, but this acknowledges that the bottle-and-can money that we used to get from the state, I'm not anticipating receiving this year. And everything else is fairly status quo. So any questions on revenues? Okay. So if we look at our performance objectives for FY '16, this is the exciting part. This is the part I get excited about, what we're going to be doing. The Resource Recovery Project will continue to dominate our time, at least through the first quarter of FY '16, probably through September. Where we are now, we're in the final stages of negotiations with the vendor that the city signed the exclusive right to negotiate with, Mustang Renewable Power Ventures. We have been in those negotiations with Mustang for several months, fairly intensely. They've been tough negotiations. We're going to come back to the City Council with a robust status update in July of 2015 with where we are and what our recommendations are. But certainly through fall and probably maybe winter of this coming year, we'll stay busy with that. The second project that we'll continue to do is to monitor compliance of the retailers that are subject to the single-use bag ordinance. The bag ordinance is now in full swing. Both tiers of stores are now subject to it, and we are starting to collect our first year of annual reporting that's due by August. And so, you know, I'm happy to say that there's been very little enforcement. All of the retailers that are subject to the ordinance have been doing very well with it, but we'll continue to help them out with that. The third project, and this is really the one I'm most excited about, is to distribute a revised waste enclosure guideline. And that may not mean much, but what we've been, just by way of background, about 10 years ago, the city of Santa Barbara, the first city in probably the western United States, drafted and distributed a waste enclosure guideline for architects and developers to get a sense of how they should size and locate enclosures for development. We did that 10 years ago, and a lot has changed. Laws have changed, diversion standards have changed, programs have changed, and our rate structure has changed. We're also deeply involved in the development review process now. We know a whole lot more. And so as a customer service initiative to help architects and developers size their enclosures appropriately and get through the planning process as it pertains to this one element, we've done two things. Last year, we developed about 30 archetypes of waste generating customers. We built these profiles on what does a typical, you know, gas station, office building, medical clinic, restaurant, café generate, and of what types. And what size enclosure, then, is typically needed to handle the types of waste that are likely to be generated. We did that in concert with Marborg, with landlords, with business owners who helped us, and then we have all the data on what they typically generate. Those are done. The next step, then, is to take that information and revise our waste enclosure guidelines. My goal is, you know, I always have this mantra kicking around in my head that the first submittal of plans is the last submittal. I don't want anybody to ever be hung up in the planning process or just sail through the planning process because they've sized their enclosure appropriately and in the right place and have the right considerations. So we're about to finish that revised draft. We intend to put that out into the world next year, have it beta-tested, used widely, criticized, marked up, and we come back and revise it, and hopefully have a product, then, that is a great asset to our community. The fourth initiative, then, is, and it's really in the context of the Resource Recovery Project, as the city looks at, evaluates, and potentially moves forward with building new infrastructure, a material recovery facility, anaerobic digester, or even as our current composter continues to evolve as the industry goes, there are some options. We have some options. As costs potentially rise on the processing side, we have some options for exerting downward pressure on the collection costs. And in solid waste collection, it's the collection side that typically is the largest component of one's bill. It's the trucks, the drivers, the yard, you know, it's all that, the carts, it's all the infrastructure. So as we spend more money on the infrastructure, the processing side, and the sorting side, and the anaerobic digester side, as those go up, we want to start looking at ways to make the collection more efficient and see if we can lower those costs to keep things on a status quo basis. I won't get into it today. We will work through the Sustainability Committee, through the Solid Waste Ad Hoc Committee, move very slowly, but I'd just like to start having that discussion of, you know, what are other communities doing? What are some of the more, you know, emerging solid waste collection techniques that we might want to look at as a way to drop collection costs? So that's something we'll be talking to you about this coming year. And that's really our work plan. At that, I can take any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. For? Mr. Hotchkiss? Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Thank you. Beard looks good, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
What percent are we going to get recovery in the conversion technology project? Do you know? We had heard as high as 80, but is that too optimistic?
Well, the RFP requirement was 60%, and we are on track to meet or exceed that, you know, with the current.
Okay, great. Second question, this is really a down-in-the-weeds question. How are we, as a city, citizens, residents, doing on our recycling? And practically speaking, I go down, you know, and I say, am I supposed to recycle? I don't know. I'll just put it in there. I hope it works. So I personally am not religious about it, but perhaps other people are. Is there a way to gauge this?
There are two measures that we commonly use of recycling. There's the state mandated formula for how the state says we are doing, and the state has a current diversion mandate of 50%. The state tells us we're at 72%, right? It's a, solid waste professionals have a hard time with that because it's a black box formula that nobody can replicate. It's a mixture of financial data and the assumption that as the economy goes, so does waste generation. So they take a combination of tonnage reports from the landfill and economic data, and we throw it into a black box, and out comes our 72%.
So it's statistical, basically?
Yes, with a little bit of pixie dust thrown in. But yes, it's, so from the state's side, from the state's point of view, we're, you know, we are well above 50%. We're very close to individual 75% goal.
Okay.
From a more boots-on-the-ground standpoint, is I look, if we look at what Marborg collects, so if we just look at the trash containers, those weights, the recycling, green waste, and food scraps, the city's diversion rate is a little bit above 40%. So there's always been this big disparity between what I can replicate and see and get my hands on, you know, through Marborg, and what the state's theoretical formula is. Now, 40% still is pretty good compared to other cities. You know, on a true basis, there are cities that have a real-time diversion rate of 25%, 26%. We're at 41%. That's pretty good. And we're getting better all the time, which is the other good piece. And I just lost my train of thought, but...
But while you're thinking of that, let me ask, because we go over to Marborg, and the guys are, you know, dumping stuff out on the belt and sorting it out, I assume that means that we're not doing it perfectly at the curb ourselves, we citizens, that they have to separate the good from the bad, if I can put it that way?
Well, on the recycling carts, there's always going to be sorting. So a lot of the sorting you're seeing isn't necessarily because of contamination. It's because they want to get paper with paper, plastic with plastic, glass with glass, right? So we always sort by type and kind. Generally, you know, a good recycling line will have a contamination, a trash rate of less than 10%. So there's always going to be some trash in there. But, you know, all in all, the city has done a fairly incredible job of increasing its diversion rate over the last several years. I'll give you one example, just the business sector. If we just look at businesses and schools, we've increased our recycling rate in the business sector by about 11 true percentage points in the past four years. And that's huge. I mean, there is a lot of cardboard, paper, plastic, glass, and metal that you need to keep out of a landfill to move that much, you know, the diversion rate on that much tonnage by one percentage point. So I think the business sector has made tremendous strides, which has benefited the city's overall diversion rate.
Thanks, and thanks for a very interesting report.
Sure.
Councilmember Francisco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. For, this is a philosophical question. So when you were showing us the org chart, you have lots of, you have outreach people and education people and recycling coordinators. How much of that work could be done by Marborg if we contracted with Marborg to do it? And the reason I ask is presumably the cost per employee for Marborg is going to be lower than the cost per employee for the city?
Well, we started that in the last franchise agreement, and it wasn't, the contractual requirement was not that Marborg hire X many people, but we gave them a, we gave them a two-part diversion threshold to meet. And one was, on a weight-based basis, they would increase the city's diversion rate. The second was, work with these large businesses and multi-unit properties to get those customers to a 30% curbside diversion rate. So at least 30% of everything they subscribe to in containers was going toward diversion services, green waste, food, or blue recycling. That has, you know, and I asked them, I said, well, what has that practically translated to, right? And they And they said, oh, it's, it's about a half of an FTE probably. And so effectively, you know, we are leveraging about a half FTE of Marborg's personnel. You know, in, from a philosophical standpoint, they could do what we do, and they could. I mean, it's, I think we do it pretty well. I'll say that. I think we have a very good system, and I think that there is value in the city having control over its own messaging and branding and, you know, that the city is bringing to you high-quality services at a pretty reasonable, you know, price, as an example of good government. But, but that said, contractors do this all the time. You know, where I came from, Monterey County, I had one staff member, and waste management did it.
Uh-huh.
So.
So it is another possible approach.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I mean, the flip, I'm sorry.
Council, as you said, Councilmember Brillo.
Thank you. On the flip side of that question is, what if the city brought trash hauling in-house, made it all, you know, a public service? But I'm not going to ask that. I wanted to ask, if you could tell the public, what happens to the 10 cents that they pay for the paper bag? Does the store keep it? Does some of it come back to the city? I get that question.
It's a good question. None of the funds that are generated by the plastic, or by the paper bags come back to the city at all.
Okay.
All of that revenue is generated by the store, is kept by the store, to offset the cost of compliance. So to reprogram registers, retrain, you know, bagging staff, some of the administrative duties that go into the reporting they have to do to the city, it's a revenue offset for the store.
Okay, good. And then I wanted to congratulate you on the Looking Good Awards Ceremony today. And I wish I had the program so I could name all the award winners, but the program recognizes institutions and individuals that reduce trash and beautify the city. So it was a very nice event today, Mr. For. Thank you. And thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation. We're adjourned.